Amber Ban.
Thanks. All right, any further discussion on the minutes from the school? Okay, so then all those favor signals, I say aye. Close sessions and then the chairs, make sure.
Nice to chat, thank you.
We have other educational focus, any on that?
No, so do you want to stick on that?
Yeah.
And Dr. McGann said I should come out here because I'm the presenter for nuns right now, not the note taker for teachers. So in March, all six middle school teachers got to go to a two night conference in Springfield, Massachusetts. And it was wonderful and we thank you very, very much for supporting this. So there were a total of six, each of us got to attend six different sessions over the two days. And so I asked each person to share like the highlights of what sessions they found to be the most helpful. So I thought I'd just run down a couple of them of them now, share this with you. But so it was Logan Placy, Kat Goss, Kristy Morris, Rebecca Steves, Sarah Kraus, Paula Hood and myself. There's a session on middle school advisories. So we have an advisory time where we focus on social emotional learning type stuff as well as other. It's we have a mixed advisory grades, six, seven and eight. It's a really good team building time and time to kind of touch base with kids in a way that's not academic. And we are based on the Logan and Rebecca Steves went to that and they were so inspired by it. They're going to revamp our advisory period for next year. So that was a really worthwhile session. Another one was called implementing mindfulness in the middle school. And the benefits of mindfulness being helping the brain to reset to do its job, improving focus, emotional regulation, reducing anxiety, increasing creativity. And the presenter presented two to eight minute activities that we can do to foster mindfulness with our students. And I tried them because when kids walk in from one class to another, they're not like, oh yeah, let me sit down and get ready for math. Like really in between every class, it's social, social, how much social stuff can I get in in this time? So it's kind of like getting them to reset their brains and be ready to to do something new. And it seems to be getting harder to do. So mindfulness kind of sounds like a new agey thing, but it seems to be very useful in education. So that was another session. Best practices in middle school instructional strategies. There's a lot of, this woman shared a lot of ideas for how to engage students, how to incorporate more movement activities, how to do more formative assessments, how to do more collaborative activities. And she had like 50 of them in one hour. So we were like, whoa. So I still look back at that and I'm still digesting all of that, but it was, she delivered a lot in one hour. So that was a great session. There were two sessions on the adolescent brain, understanding development and how it affects our classroom. And that was interesting because we had this pre, we learned we have this prefrontal cortex that's responsible for our decision making, our higher order thinking skills, you know, and our reptilian brain is our amygdala in here. And adolescents very much rely on their amygdala. So we learned the strategy, like if this is our brain and this is our amygdala in here, our four fingers are our prefrontal cortex. And hopefully we filter things that want to come out of our amygdala through the prefrontal cortex. But when we get mad and stressed, we tend to just kind of blow these fingers up and then everything and then amygdala comes out. And so we've been learning strategies to keep the prefrontal cortex engaged. And so that we found that really interesting and Ms. Hood said it best, she said, "The premise of loaning out our prefrontal cortex really stuck with me and has been helping me reframe my thinking on all the things that make me go hmm in the classroom. It was a good reminder of how to support our students in the midst of adolescence." So that that's kind of a hallmark of middle school, I guess, is we're still, they're still developing their ability to keep using the prefrontal cortex and they aren't, they're more relying on the amygdala. So that was interesting. Oh, they had some really interesting people that do like brain scans for people with Alzheimer's can see how people's brains age, like in terms of getting plaque and stuff on them. And they said after COVID, the brains of teen brains looked as though they had aged in average about three years during only 10 months of the pandemic. This effect mirrors what is known to happen in teen brains after they are exposed to adversity or traumatic events. So I asked a lot of questions about that because I was like, what are you saying? Like, what caused that? And they didn't, they didn't want to talk about what caused it, like whether it was sitting on YouTube for like a million months at a time or what. But apparently they could see differences in the brain after that time of at home learning. We, Sarah and I went to Contagious Fun, Forgetting to Be Afraid in Math Class. And we learned a bunch of movement based games, activities and tasks to promote engagement. We've already incorporated what we've learned and this might sound like a no brainer, but when I play math games, it's always based on like the skills we've been learning. But this woman was like, play math games, but the way the students earn points should be completely and utterly almost nonsense and not rely on whether or not you got the math right. And I was like, oh, that's right, because the kids who can't do it as quickly or who don't do it right, like have really no incentive to be involved. So now I play, you know, I ask like three questions where they have to solve math problems. And then they get up and like have to throw this ball in like different little goals. And they earn points by throwing the ball, not by answering the math questions, but they have to answer three more before they're allowed to get up and throw more, you know, make more goals or whatever. And they're so competitive that they're like, give me the math problems. And I was like, oh shit. So that was very interesting to me. That wasn't, it was just, that was very helpful. And the last session that I want, we wanted to share is we went to one on news literacy. And they, they shared some startling information. They said, overall, young people's ability to reason about the information on the internet can be summed up in one word, bleak. The results, if they can be summarized in a word, are troubling. Did you know that nearly 40% of Gen Z prefers using TikTok and Instagram as their search engines, according to recently released internal data from Google? And according to research from NewsGuard, it's a research organization, nearly one in the five videos automatically suggested by TikTok, by a TikTok platform contain misleading information. So if one in five TikToks contain misleading information and nearly 40% of our kids are using it as their news source, like that's where they're getting the news. We're like, oh boy. So these teachers from Connecticut made a two week unit for grade seven and a different two week unit for grade eight, helping them identify news bias and helping them identify, like be aware of objective places to get news from. So that was pretty interesting. The last thing that people asked me to say is we loved having time together. It was great to hang out in a different environment and to have time to bond. There is a lot to be said about getting to know one another on different levels. It only adds to our already supportive middle school environment. And in the words of Ms. Steves, essentially the conference was a retreat to recharge and bond together as a group. And we returned home feeling better prepared mentally and professionally to work with our students. So that's a nutshell, and I, if you want, I have some anything. But thank you very, very much for supporting that.
It's great.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Yeah.
Thank you for going and making the best of it.
Yeah, it is annual. I don't know that we go annually because we had to get subs for all of us. Yeah, getting subs right now is, is challenging.
That was a challenge.
Um, we didn't really like being away from our students. We were like, kind of like bad to be away from them, but they.
I get that. It must be hard to, for all of you to leave at once. It's different when it's one guy.
Yeah.
And they still have some normalcy, but how did the kids take it when you, when you get back?
Um, I think they, the sixth graders did okay. I think they kind of had a rough time.
Yeah. That's, I mean, that makes sense.
I mean, we left excellent sub plans and they, they did the work, you know? But I think on paper, everything went smoothly, but we heard a lot of like, he said, she said, so I just, I think they had a bit of a time, but they're okay. So thank you so much for that.
Next up, correspondence. And we got Deb's report via paper to them. It sounds like she wanted that we need to schedule some trust fund hearings or I'm not, she didn't, I guess, give us much information about which ones, but.
Yeah, what she did was she just, you know, broke out what, what ones were, separated the ones that the board had decided not to put in the budget in when you use trust funds for it. So those are the items.
Instead of having all of it, the item description in the budget, she changed it to technology, equipment, technology, facilities.
Okay, so we need a technology, equipment and facilities and vehicle.
Yeah.
So we need a bunch of hearings.
There's a lot, right, right.
So we could do them all in the same night.
Right.
You can do them all in a single.
None of these are terribly big ticket items and I think our last hearing didn't have any feedback. So I guess I wouldn't anticipate there being a need for having this as like breaking it up.
She needs to have this prior to July 1, correct?
Right.
So do you want to do, schedule for the next?
Yeah.
Yes.
The next one is June 12.
So we can just schedule.
Or June 12, does that leave enough time for the postings? Yeah.
Right, we'll do, we'll have enough time.
Seven days. Oh, yeah, yeah, that's right there.
I mean, if you look over each of them, she's set everything out.
Yeah.
I have everything in. So I think you're all set with the explanation.
And that's it from Deb. Do you have anything else for them?
And that's it from Deb.
Then you're up, so we can move forward.
Sorry, the other one she sent was your, your budget versus your actual.
Oh, yeah.
What she does need to present to the board on a regular basis. So this is all the information, the major expenses by function rather than by object.
Is that bottom line, the 491, the projected expense fund balance or current, you know?
Yeah, is this like as of, as of the date of printing or is this as of what we expect it to be as of the close of the year?
It's as of March, it may fit, it may first.
Okay. And do we need to vote to retain the 5% prior to July 1? We don't, we just do it. That was, okay.
Okay. The vote is usually later than in the summer.
Right. Okay, okay. So it doesn't have to be done prior to July 1, perfect. Thank you.
All right.
And then on the second page was just a definition, so that you know what lines, what they refer to.
Not that.
Yep.
And then.
So.
Let's also put it up, yeah.
Is that, both of those?
I will assume.
That, that's requiring.
Coming up in your own, got to go.
Yeah.
Captain.
Thank you.
Okay, just want to go over a few dates. You have your Ice Cream Social, Ice Cream Social coming up tomorrow evening at 6:30 with a little bit, a little concert coming up at 7.
Are you fine?
Good. Really good. The Booster's Athletic Bank banquet is on June 3 at the Jeans Playhouse. And middle school, you know, will be recognized as well at 4 and the high school is at 5:15. But that will be at the Jeans Playhouse. High school graduation, these are all on your list, but it's Friday, June 7. And that will be at 5 p.m., but it will be inside high school gym. And if anybody has to sign, we have one more for Jonathan's going to sign him right after.
Yes.
And we'll let him drive. Now let's say a school.
So question was, on the high school graduate, was it, was it considered to be outside?
No, I think during COVID, they had done it outside. So now the students kind of decide on if they, if they want to go outside entirely. Like they.
Okay, it takes all the guesswork out of the weather, absolutely. And if it's too hot, then you're under a tent and yeah, if it rains, then yeah, yes, just keep it some. Yeah, exactly.
AC works.
Oh, yeah, it does.
Uh, okay, so graduates in the continuation is on Tuesday, June 11. Now with the, remember you had one more day added to the school calendar because it's snow day. So they'll be getting out on the 13th instead of on the 12th.
Half day though, right? 11:45?
Yeah. Yeah. Good, that works better, actually. So thank you.
I think when we do the calendar, when you do the calendar, you should always like see how many days are going to be left in that week.
Yeah, yeah.
No one wants to back for Monday.
No, 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 no.
Uh, we will be starting the, we have two different summer programs going on. We have a credit recovery for the high school students and that starts a little bit earlier. It starts in June and so that will go from June 17 to July 12, for those who need that. And then you have your extended school year program, which begins July 1st and it will end August 1st. And that's about four, four days a week.
Eight to 10, do buses that run to the can and stuff after? Yeah, good.
They'll take care of that.
Excellent.
Is the, is the credit recovery eight to 10 as well with that, or is it?
Yeah, the credit recovery is to the high school.
It's, but is it the same hours or it's not on there?
June 17, July 12?
Yeah, this was just like schedule wise, like how many hours a day is it?
Yeah, yeah, credit recovery. Oh yeah, that for the time.
Yeah.
Uh, that is, that is in the morning. I think it's, you know, like eight to 10 or something, but I'm pretty sure they do that. And that doesn't, I mean, it starts on the 17th, but everybody finishes at a different time.
Right. It depends on what the needs to recover, what you're sure.
Correct. Now you also have the STEM enrichment camps for the elementary grades. That's July, into the July 12th and then a little bit of a break in the, well, the weekend then they go July 15 to the 19th. So it's two weeks there that.
Nice.
They're working on those. Technology. We did have the educational focus. I just want to mention before you get into your next component, which is your policies. We have a list of policies that are going to be going the second reading, but there are two policies, BGAA and KEE, in which we did, the, the policy committee did review them. However, we just got all the updates on all the policies and those two particular policies we're going to have to revise based on legislature. So we will be doing that so that the, for the committee will be reviewing those again, those two particular ones. So that's why we left them off the list just.
Oh, good, because I had made a note of that. Thank you. And I have a question. It says NHSBA, the least spring policy updates on June 12th. It's only May 22nd.
Oh, must it, it should have been May 12.
Oh, May 12, sorry. I quit June.
How did that happen? Thank you. Perfect.
Well, let's see. Okay, that's it. The rest we can take care of when we get there.
All right. And I don't see Mr. Robert, but is there a?
No, he's not here. Is he at the family commitment that he had to?
Oh, good for him.
To, to.
Yeah.
But there is no report on that.
Okay.
Will Mr. Savali start joining us first?
He'll start coming on the next.
Perfect. Thank you for asking. Yeah. Break you in.
And then I guess there would be committee reports and I know we've quoted some policies.
Oh, see, yeah.
Start there.
We all had a chance to read through and you all have lots of questions, right?
I wasn't trusting.
Collaboration and. And Sharon's awesome getting them ready. Yeah, absolutely. She does. It's, she's pretty amazing. Did anybody have anything before we move them to first reading? We'll move them through to second.
I just, I didn't see anything that was, that stood out to me, but it, it is, there all seem to be like fairly minor changes.
Yeah, most of them are. The big one was the application for building use that kind of redid that whole. Didn't redo the policy and didn't like really reinvent the wheel, just kind of clarified it a little bit better, I think.
The form in the policy on intent agree.
Right.
And that was one of the, trying to make them put to agree. Um, and then just to modernize the.
Right.
The actual form to make it a little more user friendly.
And you're not voting for this to go into effect, you're just voting for second reading.
Yeah.
Move into second reading, yeah. Did anyone have anything else?
Was there any other questions at this point about this stuff?
And I would make a motion to move policies, BK, EBCB, EBCG, EH, EHAA, GBCD, GBGA, GBGFA, GBDR, IHBBA dash R1, IHBBA dash R2, IJNDB, JBAA dash R2, JGB dash RJLC, JLCD dash R, JLCE, JLCG, JLE, KDC, KF, KF dash R. The second reading. Should I do the withdrawals separately or together?
I think we usually do the withdrawals after these are fully approved.
Okay, so just leave those there. Perfect.
A second.
Thank you.
Karen, if you guys, any further discussion on that?
Hey, so, sorry, just a question on the AEDs. It's not necessarily on the policy, but often the policy you talk about, employees will be authorized after they have successfully received and completed appropriate training. How many, is that a required training that happens or how many staff members go through that training?
I would say the majority of the staff members go through it. I'm trying to get everybody to eventually take the training, that it is available to during, usually available during the first three days of school. And sometimes they'll do some after school, a couple of after school days for those that want to do it then.
Okay.
Are all the staff members certified for first aid?
Yes, just about.
Because AED training now is part of the first aid certification if you do it through the ambulance.
Right, right. Yeah.
If anyone that has first aid is trained in AED as well, so.
Yeah.
That's what they do.
Yes.
Just to clarify, on, on the policy here, it says it's GBGBA. On the listing and what you look at the motion, you said GBGFA because that's what on the.
Oh, you're right. That was the, the one that we had to clarify.
Okay. So I don't know if we can just.
So it's GBG.
BA.
BA. I would like to amend my motion to reflect that.
So that's a motion to amend.
Second.
Say, follows in favor of amending the motion.
Aye.
Aye. Close sessions.
Thank you.
The motion's amended. And is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing now and all those favor signals, I was saying aye.
Aye. Over here, but not you.
Extensions and that motion carries. So we will have that for second reading and then I think definitely what we do is we do the withdrawals at the time of.
After they pass with the summer, yeah.
Any other policy or any other committee reports?
Yeah, we met tonight.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, we closed tonight. Mark came to us with a request, we purchased a tractor. Well, he wanted to trust one, to pull them over, down payment, but we just backed up a little bit. We have possibly a lot of money coming up, coming up shortly. And we only had one option. We just backtracked a little bit, wanted to have a couple more options, a couple different tractor prices and stuff like that. I thought we left it there. He's going to come back with a little bit more information.
Think that a replacement tractor or an additional tractor?
Replacement.
Replacement, gotcha.
If anybody wants to look at the bid, right, I have all.
I don't know, just are we trading in the old one or selling it outright or has that decision?
We talked about trading it in, it was only worth like $7,000, something like that at this point. But no, there's no need for two tractors, so.
Gotcha.
So is the, is the idea to like auction the tractor?
Well, you're talking about possibly a trade in towards this, going to take $7,000 off of it, something like that. That was a possibility, but yes.
Okay.
That would be an alternative.
Has anybody researched whether it would be worth private sale? Is there a big difference? Do we know?
No, because when we came into the meeting, you can have your purchasing a new one, I can really go into it.
Oh, gotcha. Okay.
So with that, okay, I'm just going to add that one of the, the, with the trade in plus the government addition, they, they will give 2,400. So it comes to about 10,000, you know, close to 10,000 maybe we get for that.
Towards the new.
Oh, gotcha. Between the trade in and the, yeah.
So bringing down more, 3,000 for the attractive.
Same size roughly as the one we have?
No, this is a skid here, where they went to with the file attachments and all that stuff. Just had a few quackies about it and we're going to have to explain it a little bit because the town definitely comes in a file. The town definitely comes in in sand. The town, they do a lot of stuff for it, so we try to justify a little bit better before we spend that money.
Escape, yeah.
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
That's why we wanted to discuss it a little bit further. That's it. That's where we left it. No action on the board required for that whatsoever at this point.
So can I ask, is that what that's on the, uh, for the hearing, trust fund hearing?
For the $10,000?
Yeah, $10,000 is, is that?
So I do recall a discussion about that. There was a request to put in money for down payment in budget and we pulled that. Put it to the truck.
The tractor, that one speaks to it.
I, yeah, I think the, there was a tractor. Man, I, I think the. Marvin looked at that.
I mean, it's good to hear it's handy. Things to have.
Yeah. I mean, I guess it's up to Marvin though. So it's, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think what, I didn't want it in a better way.
Yeah, I think what I just wanted in a better way to show the public what we were purchasing and whether compared to the prices of different tractors, instead of just going, this is it. But that though, I'm not saying we won't be purchasing. I'm just saying I would like just a little more information to present to the public. Middle school flooring looks like it should be starting on the seventeenth of June. The windows and doors are in. And the bulletproof glass for the safety brand.
They're in as installed?
No, in as in we have them in.
To get. Okay, perfect.
So we're going to start doing that in the schools though. Middle high school HVAC. That wing is going to be all new. We're actually in. I don't know. I used to call it the English wing, but it's not the English wing anymore. It's straight down the hall from the high school. We're actually going to have fresh Jared hand exhaust there now. Going to be huge. Southern staffing with the Brad job, Mr. Higgins, the gun can come in, help with the moly and stuff.
Oh, good.
And we talked a little bit more about the garage and getting the element free vents fixed up back here. And that was it.
Excellent. The HVAC, once that's completed, that air handle, then that's job is complete.
Pretty much.
Fantastic.
I mean, there's still a lot of work to get out of.
Oh, sure.
The insulation bargain.
That's awesome.
That's it for today for the night.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions for just?
That was a lot.
Yeah.
Any other?
No other things.
Then business requiring board action, nominations, recommendations and resignations?
Yeah, I do not. That person, the candidate that we're, we're looking at is not, she's not ready to make the decision until tomorrow. So she will be calling us tomorrow.
Next meeting then.
So again, my question is, could, could I offer her, if she says yes, could I offer her a, a contract and then to finish off the nomination on the 12th? I do not want to wait until the 12th to offer her a contract.
If you agree, she'll go somewhere else. We'll miss her.
If she had said yesterday, you would be presenting her to us tonight.
Yes, I'm going to present in a minute.
Right, but if she had agreed to it prior, it wouldn't be a question.
If she, right, if she has said yes, but she didn't, she's visiting, she just visited the school.
Oh, gotcha.
You know, today, so she was not.
Right.
So I mean, can you present the nomination? We can accept the nomination if she doesn't accept the.
Yeah, we can do it that way.
Perfect. Yeah.
Any issue with that?
No, I just.
No, that's fine.
That's what I was kind of asking. Close to around, I mean, I could talk. The team, teacher said that, that she would be working with, work there for the interview as well as the consideration. And then this background checks and so it's Emma Donovan. She has worked here. Yeah, like I would nominate her and then, then you would go with the, a vote on that. And then if she doesn't, and she decides not to take it, then I would just.
I'll make a motion to approve the nomination of Emma Donovan.
Second.
Thank you, gentlemen. Any further discussion on that? All those favors, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those close, extensions and that motion carries.
I hope she decides to join us.
Obviously, that's dependent upon her accepting the.
Yes, correct.
And then in your packet, the next one was a deputy treasurer appointment. And that's a letter from Sandy Dovolak.
We don't take action on this. This is truly up to Sandy and that's it.
Right. I just wanted to make sure.
I think you have to approve Sandy's recommendation. That's what happened the last.
Interesting. Okay. Well, I'll make a motion to approve Sandy Dovolak's recommendation to appoint Sharon Holt as deputy treasurer for the district.
One second.
Thank you, gentlemen. Any further discussion?
You're good with that? Perfect.
All of the favors, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close, extensions.
Thank you, Jen. Thank you.
Do you have anything else you want to take off?
Yeah, because we can add things.
This one you do not need a vote on is the annual review of investment policy DFM. It just requires the board to review the policy and there are no changes recommended at this time.
They just have to mark down that we reviewed it, not that we don't know anything. Perfect.
We go through the policies from the job?
We, we did not, we did not withdraw them because typically what we do is we wait until the policy. Get blocked out.
I have the same. You're good.
Is there any discussion or motions regarding the reference from the investment policy DFM?
No, I have that.
We can argue that as having been reviewed by the board and no recommendations for Jen. I don't see anything of a new business. We have continuing business for strategic plan?
Strategic plan, still moving forward with that and integrating that into the overall system. And that the NEAS is also now going to merge into the NEAS process and merging in with that. So actually perfect timing because the NEAS has another two years, two, three to four years to go. But the strategic plan is next year. So by the time you merge everything, the, the timing should be right. So you're not running with two different plans. And they seem to be correlating very well and integrated and everything's moving forward. We sent in all the reports to NEAS and they will be coming back with recommendations.
So the NEAS folks that came and visited to do sort of like the audit, when do we expect to get their report back?
I, I would say about three to four weeks.
Okay.
We usually get it during the summer.
And that's what we base our, our, you know, needs for improvement.
Yeah, yeah. But that's when we first did the strategic plan, my concern was who's going to have the strategic plan and then we're going to have this other plan with the NEAS. And it's like, okay, we have two different plans running here, guys. Can we, you know, merge it? And they seem to be merging together very well right now.
All right. Any other thoughts of what strategic plan? Superintendent Search? Good evening.
How are you? So I'm going to give you a brief overview of what the superintendent search committee has been doing. Hope people know very well. Search went better than expected, I think.
You, you mind just for the record, just to say who you are?
Kristin Moncharlani, chair of the superintendent search committee. Thanks. So we ended up with six candidates, which I think was, you know, more than some people anticipated at the start. Went through a process by which the committee decided to interview four of those six. There was consideration of all of the application materials for the other two of the four. One of the candidates, I think the committee would recommend if for some reason one needed it in terms superintendent, it became clear early in the interview process that the person was actually looking for something either interim or part-time consulting role, but not a full-time superintendent piece. But very pleasant candidate who was very forthright, didn't try to convince us that we wanted something different than, that matched his goals. But definitely someone to revisit if needed in the future. Brought us down to three candidates with whom we did the full interview process. And that has been narrowed to two whom the committee now has a ready to take one of a couple steps with. Given that we are down to two candidates, both of them have said July would be an okay timeframe for them. There were lots of different views on the committee expressed, which has caused us to kind of come to the board with a please give us guidance along these lines. And I actually wrote this up for you. I'll let you just pass it that way. I'm a visual person, so if I talk about these two, it's like one, pass it down. You may want it in writing. So the search process that the Brian group would go through kind of countrywide or wherever they were, would have us take whatever candidates we had at this point that we had said, yes, absolutely qualified and potentially a good fit from the first round of interviews and go through another so-called long interview process with them. Multi-hour interviews for each candidate. I think there were a number of voices on the committee that said, is that really what we should do next? Right now, when we're looking at going into June. So we're looking for the board to tell us, choice A, tell the committee to do that, go forward, do the long interviews with both candidates and either come back to us at that point with a recommendation for one or come back to us with both if the committee still says both are qualified. Obviously, usually this process might involve more such that you were further narrowing in the next step of the interview process. So the board could tell us, go ahead and do more interviewing. A lot on the committee think we might be ready to cut that step out. So choice B would be the board could say to us, turn over the two candidates to the board at this point with just the commentary that both seemed like qualified candidates and a good fit and let the board do the next stage of interviewing themselves to make a decision between the two. And then choice C, which was proposed by some members of the committee, it's why we're bringing it up, was share with the board a preference that the committee currently has between the two candidates and recommend just one, which would leave the board sort of just ratifying that one candidate. It was not universal within the committee. So, so if we were going with a choice C, we would not be, we would be bringing you one candidate. But it, there is not universality in the committee on that, on that choice or that candidate. So just so that you all know that. Ask me questions about that because what we're looking for is direction about where you want us to go at this point, given the two candidates that we.
I think we saw one more to go. We saw one short interview to go.
That was, there was a majority vote, no on short interview for that candidate.
That's unfortunate because she was very qualified on paper. It's unfortunate that we are just giving up on one.
I don't think that's ever yet, but.
It is. So I talked to Nora today, like she has from the, the committee, kind of at the beginning, did a vote on whether we were going with just majority on each of our decision-making pieces. We did decide on majority and as of today, Nora has confirmed, we have a majority.
Okay.
Saying no to the next interview stage.
That's unfortunate.
I thought we were, we're going to be non-public about this for a moment tonight?
Right. So that's what I, I mean, this is.
I, I had not anticipated that. We did have another issue that we wanted to meet non-public about just briefly, but.
Yeah, we did short interviews with the candidates and I was really hoping we were going to get one more short interview because she's, the, the candidate number three is fantastic on paper. I really, really wanted to have that short interview. We haven't done any long interviews, which is how the process goes. And then I was just reading back, referring back to Laura's email that they were hoping to have multiple candidates to present to the school board for choices, not just one. So going right to bringing one forward just seems like circumventing the whole process that this board decided to spend fifteen thousand dollars on. And not completing the job that we were set up to do.
I kind of disagree a little bit, only based on the interviews that I heard. But I think it'd be more appropriate to talk about it in non-public.
Right. That is the, that is your option also. We're sort of looking for guidance. You could decide that, yeah, that was a, a discussion that should be had non-public.
May I speak before you go into non-public? As a search committee member?
Yeah, absolutely. Come on up. Sorry, you just introduced yourself.
I'm Megan Doherty. I'm on the search committee as a parent of a child in the sixth grade. And I, you know, I guess a little bit of background, I volunteered for the search committee as a parent, but also as an academic who's been on really more search committees for college professors and administrators than I care to remember. And I guess I came tonight to say that I have found this to be a very rigorous process. And I want to make sure that the board knows that when we say a short interview, we mean an hour and a half. This isn't a twenty-minute first round interview where you maybe get a sense of like, is this a human I'd like to spend time with, right? It's a, it's an hour and a half and the, the way that they're structured is that the candidates are asked to give an up story and a down story. And then Nora does a great job of interrupting and asking lots of questions. And I think you really get a sense of them, you get a sense of how the candidates will respond in stressful situations, which I imagine you, you could speak to better than I could, but I imagine they come up. And, and I think you not only get a sense of how they, how they view what success looks like for them, but also how they build consensus, how they build community, how that, you know, one success that they're speaking about was really the kind of culmination of hundreds of hours of, of conversation. And, and then similarly with the, with the down story, right? They know they're going to be asked for a down story so they can prepare it, but they, I don't think anyone could prepare for the, the kind of guided storytelling that as, as the Brian group called it, because it's not just like, here's this canned thing that I wanted to tell you about myself, that I've like polished into this bad story about myself that has this like silver lining, right? That you really have to be, she really kind of pulls apart what you, what you're saying and what you might have prepared, but really getting into the, the, you know, the emotional aspects of it, as well as the sort of social and community aspects and, and then there's a, so that's the first forty-five minutes to an hour. And then there's another thirty, forty-five minutes. That's what we might expect in a traditional interview, right? There are set questions that we asked to each of the candidates that are sort of more standard things, right? Why Linwood? Why this position, right? Things you can anticipate having in an interview. And then there were ones that we submitted as, you know, specific to particular candidates based on the materials they had submitted. And then there's another hour after the candidate lead or forty-five minutes to an hour where we go through the roles and competencies. I was like criteria. I was like, sorry. It's, there's like five in the top section and eleven in the second section that were built out based on feedback from all of us. Feedback, I think she met with many of you or there was, and then the survey that was sent to our whole community. So we kind of pulled together those things that we're judging each of these candidates against from this broad, you know, broad-based feedback on those. And we go through each one and it's not just kind of, I didn't like this person or this person sounds great. It's all, you know, she really kind of pushes us to have specific evidence from what the people have said with the specific anecdote, anecdote they were talking about. And there, you know, each of those competencies or, you know, or the roles have eight to ten subpoints underneath them. So I, I guess I just want to, to convey that this short interview is, you know, two and a half to three hours of the committee on a call. And then, you know, those of us who, you know, folks who couldn't be there, it's all recorded. And folks send written responses to Nora if you weren't able to be live on the call. So I guess I just wanted to share about that process. So you don't feel like we're, you know, we just were like, yes, this person seems great. Let's be done, right? We've, we've put a lot of hours into putting together the, the criteria that we're evaluating them or, I don't know. I don't know how to end that without a preposition at the end, but anyways, right? Like this is why you like to edit things. But, um, you know, we, we've put a lot of time into the, the sort of rubric. And we've put a lot of time into the evaluation of the written materials and the, the so-called short interview that, you know, an hour and a half to two hours long. So that's just what I wanted to share. So you had a kind of, I mean, you have two people here, but I just wanted to kind of share that, you know, in all the searches for faculty, staff at universities and colleges, administrators, like this strikes me as a very rigorous process. So I wanted to share that. Thank you.
Thank you. So why, I'm curious as to why these three options are being presented when, you know, option A is what has been recommended by the Brian group?
Uh, I think that it was, um, a number of members on the committee, I'll come up here. Uh, in answer to your question, a number of members on the committee felt like the long interview process for these two candidates wasn't necessarily going to get us any further, given the thoroughness just described. Um, and it is possible that we would sort of still be in the same place saying to the board, okay, we still have two. Now do you want to interview them? Um, I'm not going to express an opinion one way or another, but I, I think there was a lot of feedback from people saying we could go through now four hours with each of these candidates, but we're not sure we're going to end up in any different place. So the question was, would the board want to do essentially their own interviews next of two candidates? It would make a lot of sense if we had six and we wanted to get those down to two to present, but that's not where we are. We have sort of two that the committee as a whole is saying qualified and fit at this point. We can still do it.
And has so, has the Brian group, Nora directly said that we should, the, the committee should go through step A?
I can, will you read your email?
Yeah, you can read the email and then after the email, we talked about.
This is, Nora had conferred with Barrett Christina and then composed the email to the committee and it's, um, a factor to consider is the little school community and greater community. They are expecting to meet multiple qualified candidates. Um, would they be comfortable with one? I leave it to you and the board to answer. Uh, I'm going to paraphrase a little bit, not paraphrase, but skip some of the, um, there's a school board meeting Wednesday, bring this to the board. Uh, describe our process, application review, um, ask if the, if the board is comfortable with receiving a recommendation from one candidate at this point, or if they would like us to proceed further with the interviews and potentially present more than one candidate. If the board is comfortable with one finalist candidate and the majority of the search committee is in favor, then great. If the board wants us to continue with the process, we can certainly, certainly do that. If the board is open to one candidate nomination, they could go to executive session where the candidate could be named. We could then set up the interview for the candidate with the board as well as do reference and background checks.
So that is what we got to.
Right.
What she's spending a lot of time on there is the choice C. And we ended up having a conversation after that, that sort of was like, okay, let's, uh, choice B is sort of the alternative to that, where Nora's saying, well, not necessarily clear that the board wants to just be presented one candidate. Right? So then it's, it's kind of choice A and B would leave us in potentially similar places. In one instance, the committee goes through another round of long interviews, but we might well still come back with, here are your two candidates. Or we could say, here are two candidates that have the backing of the committee, would the board like to interview these two, that choice B? Choice C was the one that Nora was really responding to because it was, you can hear from her email, it was suggested by a number of committee members. And she is, she is expressing hesitation about that, right? But sort of leaving it in the board's hands to decide what they want. As, as the letter to all says, choice C would really be taking some of the board role out of it. And I think that's Nora's concern and asking you to just ratify one candidate. So the other two would hand you the two. It's just a question of at what point.
So in, at any point in the process, do we, does the board see the, you're using scoring sheets, right?
Right. So my understanding from Nora, and she just clarified this by a text right before, they do not turn over the scoring sheets. She, I think, would be happy to give the board kind of an overview of that. Um, it would again be a question of, um, I think the board asking her questions, it's a question for all of you of, are you looking to do your own interviews of two candidates? Or are you looking to know which one at this point was preferred by the search committee? And then we'll, and then we'll take that into account as we interview. You could go either way. And I think that would be guidance from Nora. Um, but they don't turn over the rating sheets per se.
It sounds like if this were a bigger district or of, you know, a, a longer process, eh, this wouldn't even be an option because you would just continue with the normal process.
Right.
But the reason why this is being presented is because there are two. And the first interview that's called a short interview, that is longer than any professional interview I've ever had, um, is so rigorous that it's sort of repeating the process on your level if it, if you go through the, the, the typical process. So it's like, should we move on to, I mean, I wouldn't be in favor of C. Um, I, I would be comfortable with B.
And I, and I would say from what.
Yeah. One of the things is knowing the, the first interview that there was going to be another one. That we would get to talk as a committee and then have a second interview if needed. So there was a lot of things, eh, eh, personally that weren't asked or said or delved into until we had the discussion with the committee itself, and then I made my lists. So it's, I, it's, you know, it's half eaten cake.
That, I, it really becomes a, yeah, we're just saying it's a board decision chair, but the choice.
I think we should probably listen to what they're saying.
Yeah, Joe is suggesting we discuss this in non-public. I agree.
The only other thing I would say is that long interview process, I mean, Tammy's right, the long interview process did, would be asking somewhat different questions. There's a full resume review to the long interview process. Uh, we've already seen all their resumes, all their letters of recommendation, of which there were multiple. Uh, and obviously heard a good amount about their resume through the long interviews that were short. But if the candidate would be asked to go through every single position they'd ever had and tell us about it in a long interview. Again, I think that you, you have to weigh, yes, there's more information that would come out of a long interview. The feeling of the committee was we might well do those long interviews ourselves and still come back to you with, here are your two candidates. We still think both of them are fits. So I think the board would have to think about, do you really, you know, if you also are going to do a reasonable interview process yourselves of two candidates presented, then it might be appropriate to just move to that or, or not, or, um, in the end, you, I don't think you get, um, you're not going to get rating sheets per se from the Brian group. Um, they feel like those are too confidential. Um, but there might be more, there might be more information on both candidates. I, you know, personally, I think we'd probably still be in the position of presenting you both of the candidates. Um, even if we went through the long interview process. So it's just a question of whether you want us to consider more, make sure that's true, and then present them to you, or choice B, hand them to you now and the board can decide to do its own. And then there is choice C only because it was recommended by some of the committee. I think that what Tammy read, the Brian group was probably not in favor of choice C, that that's short-circuiting too much of the process anyway. Any other questions on that?
Yeah. So, so the, this long interview is it's a different interview.
It is a different interview. It's still, there's some story-based piece to it. I think it starts out with a traversing through kind of the entire career history. So the question would be, do we, if we're not coming back with straight out rating scales, do we come back as a committee with a qualitatively different answer to you from that? Do we find something that we had no idea of in that whole history that we suddenly say, no, we don't like one of these candidates anymore? Or do we just all know more, but we're still coming to the board because we're not handing over the rating sheets? We're still coming to the board with here are two candidates that we've spent.
We don't know because we haven't finished the process.
I. Hmm. We're, yeah, expressing an opinion, these came from kind of the, the committee had differences of opinion and the choice is yours.
That's fine. It would be no good at all if we all agreed on everything. So, yeah.
So, yeah, I, I think non-public.
Absolutely. Okay. As long as we identify it when we go in.
Yeah. Yeah. So we just have a brief discussion after the.
Yeah.
And we definitely don't have to mention any names or anything in a non-public. It's just going to be a. Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, I think that probably means though that well, I guess we could just give informal feedback. We don't need to take official action on that. Let's, you know, we can just say the majority of the board wants to do APH um, and we can give that information to the board.
I agree.
Well, thank you, uh, Kristen and Megan for coming down.
Thank you so much. And thank you for, I mean, it is that it'll look at something and have it tangible on, yeah.
See your faces again soon.
Thank you all. Thank you.
What was the other one?
The one you called me and request before this week.
Okay. Okay. Just want to make sure.
What do you mean what is?
I just want to make sure. I'd be, because if not, I was going to add that.
Yeah, that was it.
Okay.
Um, students, I don't see any students. Does this, does it mean, but we do have some.
All right. Um, from Julie Rand. Um, the first grade got their books back, got their books back from the publishers. I think they made one book. So they dedicated the book to Dan Adams for helping the students create background on the iPad.
Nice.
They will donate one to the school library, one to the Lincoln library and one to the Woodstock, right?
Fantastic.
Yeah. Um, from Rebecca Steves, Kat Goss and Erin Welks. All twenty-four grade eight students came home today from three days at the Holbert Outdoor Center. They participated in many team building activities, archery, a night walk and exploration hike, which included sheltering in a low tree house during a thunderstorm. Delicious meals, campfire dreams, lots of outside time and even some tennis. They also challenged themselves on a multi-sided climbing tower, low elements, high bridges and a forty-foot tall zip line, which most of them did. The Holbert staff and facility were yet again amazing. The kids really worked through some physical and mental challenges, expanding their comfort zones in many directions. They also worked with and supported each other in new ways, which was awesome to see. Thank you to the administration and school board for providing this opportunity for growth and adventure to our students. And from Christie Morris and myself, grade five students came down to the middle school today for step-up day. It was great to meet them. They were full of nervous energy and jitters. Um, but they seem to have left feeling confident and excited.
Very cool.
So, yeah, got to meet two of them.
So fun.
Having Isla and Jackson was, was cool and just exciting to see.
Mm-hmm.
Um, just really, it's a neat process.
That's cool for them.
Yeah.
I love that our kids still go on camping trip. I mean, it's not the week-long one, but it's still three days of, no, the middle school.
And they recabbed it in, in my daughter's, in the middle of the night, two girls had come in from another room because the room was infested with bugs. So it was still.
And they probably saw a spider.
Right. It wasn't bad. That wasn't like, so it wasn't like.
Sure.
It was enough that there were bugs.
I love that they do it though. That's great.
I need to.
Right. We have a, a great community, a great school that supports things like that. I love it.
And that's all that I have.
Thank you very much. Uh, I do not see any community unless, or, yeah, all right. Um, then I will pull the board to go into non-public. Uh, there's two items in non-public, both, um, who are, one of, well, one of them is discussing a matter that may affect the reputation of a person, of a member of the board, and then another one is, uh, regarding hiring of a person. Two of those issues, uh, one of each. Kevin? Yes. Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. Maybe say yes, yes.
Kevin. I think we're in that. And we won't be taking any votes or anything afterwards. Okay.